Good evening, everyone. The Planning Commission hearing for September 8th is hereby called to order. Please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. Since Commissioner Eggenberger is apparently in Belgium, I've asked Commissioner Lee to fill in as Acting Secretary, so would you please call the row? The vote? The roll? The roll.
The roll, okay.
Whatever you want to call it.
Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Eggenberger is, what do you call that?
Excused.
Excused, I'm sorry. Commissioner Foster.
I'm here.
Commissioner Janowski.
Here.
Commissioner Lee, here. Commissioner Singh.
Commissioner Singh gave prior notice that he would not be available to attend.
Okay. Commissioner Watkins.
Here.
Commissioner Weber.
Here.
And Chairperson Zubor.
Here. Thank you very much. All right, so we have two sets of minutes to approve. We have the August 4th minutes. Anyone want to make a motion?
Motion, Madam Chair.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Weber. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, and we also have minutes of August 18th.
Motion, Madam Chair.
Support.
All right, this time we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Foster. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Unless you want to discuss it. All right. Motions for both carry unanimously by voice vote. We have an agenda. Is there anything to add or delete? Patrick?
No changes to the agenda.
Okay. Excellent. Anyone want to make a motion about the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second, Madam Chair.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Watkins. Keep it in the W's this time. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And, oh, I'm sorry, I neglected to mention when we did the roll call that we have Patrick here from the township, so.
And also, I have on Zoom meeting our legal counsel from Foster-Swift is with us this evening as well.
Awesome.
And Mackenzie Almasian is filling in for Courtney, so she's on Zoom for Foster-Swift. So any legal questions, we can go through the Zoom meeting.
Awesome. Thank you. Welcome, Mackenzie. All right. Any communications we should know about Patrick?
No additional communications.
Okay. Excellent. And we have a public comment section, and we have two items this evening where we have public hearings. Those are both, those you will have an opportunity to talk about when those agenda items are called, or when we have the public hearing for each of those. That would be Fillmore Place and Clean Express Car Wash. So we are also going to discuss the Canton Township Fire Station #4 and the Muslim Educational Community Center of America, also known as MECA. So if you'd like to comment on any of those, either of those two items, the Township Fire Station or MECA, or if you want to talk about something else, you are now welcome to avail yourself of the public comment. Would anyone like to make a comment, sir? Go on up to the mic and please state your name and address for the record. And you have three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, I've spoken before. My name is Michael Duff. I live at 501-85 Geddes Road, Canton, Michigan. My concern today is the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act law. It's Section 125 dot 3601, Chapter 125, Act 110 of 2006. Canton Township employees, Planning Commission, Zoning Board, Zoning Board of Approval or Appeals, have not complied with the Michigan zoning law acts, specifically failure to do so, or conflict of interest is what the issue is. Failure to do so constitutes a malfeasance in office. Any or any party has been negatively affected by the Planning Commission, Zoning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, or have information beneficial to the FBI should contact Michigan Corruption at FBI.gov with the subject heading Canton Corruption. Thank you.
Could you elaborate, sir, on what exactly you're alleging we did wrong?
There's a conflict of interest on the board, Canton employees, and I've sent that information to the police chief and to the FBI.
Could you tell us what the conflict of interest is?
Conflict of interest is when you have, you're sitting on the board and you still work for the Canton Township.
So you think someone is sitting on the board that works for the township?
I have the evidence of that, yeah. Thank you.
Interesting. Okay. All right, anyone else? Make any allegations or comments or anything? All right. Very good. We are going to move along then. So as I mentioned before, we have two public hearings, the first of which is the Fillmore Place. It's number 125-PDDA-8608, and that is, we're going to consider the planned development district for parcel numbers 125-99-0002-710, and several, I'm not going to read all those off, multiple addresses. Properties are located on the west side of Beck Road between Michigan Avenue and Geddes Road. They're proposing to replace 59 attached single-family residential units and 192 single-family townhouse units on the side of the, I believe that's supposed to say the west side of the development, with 100 detached single-family residential units, a proposed net reduction of 151 units. Patrick, please tell us more.
Sure. Thank you. Before I begin on this item, I just wanted to just take a moment to discuss the public comment.
Thank you.
And I don't know what it's regarding, either directly or indirectly. I haven't heard anything about that generally, if it's related to a property or a project or anything like that. So I wasn't expecting to receive the comment. Had I done so, I may have been able to find some more information to see if it was about a specific property or a specific project or a specific person. When we, I'll talk a little bit about conflict of interest in general, and I'm not related to Fillmore Place, but I just want to have this as a precursor just to...
Yeah, sorry, I didn't give you an opportunity before, Patrick. I apologize. So, thank you.
Yeah, and just for the benefit of the Planning Commission and the public of the rules that we abide by. We have the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. We also have the Michigan Planning Enabling Act that governs a lot of different things that we do. So what we do is governed by state law, and then it appears in our ordinances as well. As employees, we have an ethics ordinance. As appointees, you're also bound by ethics ordinances and conflicts of interest. So when we look at matters of either potential conflicts of interest or conflicts of interest that are there, we start with disclosure. So one example was about a month or two ago, when we had a planning commissioner whose property was subject to a request. He disclosed it and recused himself from the deliberations as a planning commissioner. So in the minutes of that meeting, which I think were just approved, it shows that that planning commissioner had abstained. We have another item where, at our previous work session, we're working on our wireless telecommunication ordinance, and Commissioner Weber is a consultant who's working with Canton Township as a consultant and is advising on the ordinance also. At that work session, nothing was voted on, so there was nothing that was voted on or acted upon in the role of a commissioner. But it starts with disclosure, and that professional relationship with Commissioner Weber was disclosed several months ago in terms of what he's working on with that particular ordinance. So I don't know if it's anything specific to that, I'm just using those instances with the Planning Commission where there's something like that. We disclose that, we record it in the minutes so that it's documented, that the public is aware of any, whether it's a potential conflict or a perceived conflict, or if it's a direct conflict. We always want to make sure that we disclose that. And if there's any questions about that, whether it's a person, a property, or a case, you can ask staff any questions, and we can go through any ordinances, and it's also in our bylaws as well. So I just wanted to include that as a little bit of background in terms of our ethical responsibilities, our conflict of interest responsibilities, both through state law, our ordinances, and our bylaws.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add to what you just said, that Michael Segrist recently emailed us the financial disclosure forms to fill out for each year that we need to do. So if you all did not see that in your inbox, it should be there, so, thank you. Yeah. So now, moving along to Fillmore Place, sorry.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
The property for Fillmore Place is on the west side of Beck Road between Geddes Road and Michigan Avenue, and the property is about 97 acres. And in 2020, it had PDD and site plan approval for multifamily housing of 504 units. And it was a mix of attached single-family and townhouse units. And at this point, the applicant proposes to convert the last phases on the far west side of the development to detached single-family residential instead of attached single-family residential and the townhouses. And on the screen here, I will, whoops, sorry, I'll pull up the plans here so that we can So up on the screen here is a color rendering of the proposed development. So essentially, the rooftops that are here in the orange or brown, those are the previously approved units. There's a slight change to the most northwestern unit, but I think all the other units that are in brown or orange are the same. And that's how the development was originally approved, so the open space, the walking trails, things of that nature. The lots there that are shown in the light yellow, those are the areas of proposed change. And on the previous plan, there were dense townhouses. The most dense part of the development was approved on the west side of the development. And over time, demand changes, housing markets change, products change, and it's been five years since the original site plan approval. And at this point, with those last couple of phases in the far west, the developer proposes to amend the PDD agreement and convert this to single-family detached residential with each home having its own lot and yard with it. The net change will be replacing 59 attached single-family dwelling units and 192 single-family townhouse units on the west side of the development with 100 detached single-family residential units. This will be a proposed net reduction of 151 units on the site. The proposed changes require an amendment to the PDD because the housing mix changes and the number of units change. There are also a number of modifications that go along with that. Between the original approval in 2020 and currently, there was a First Amendment to the PDD that was approved in 2023. And that First Amendment separated the project into three different parcels. And that amendment was done for financing purposes. When parts of a development are financed, the financial institution oftentimes requires that the developments be on separate parcels. So Fillmore Place currently consists of three large parcels with different phase lines drawn so that it's easier for the financing purposes. In 2023, as a result of those new lot lines, there were several modifications for setback modifications to those internal lot lines, and they're summarized in our report here. So in our staff report, there's a table, a really large table of setback modifications. Many of these were previously approved in 2023, and they're setbacks from internal lot lines or to internal streets, not to any kind of boundary along the perimeter of the site. So it's a long table, but it's made so by those internal lot lines that were created in 2023 for the most part. So the proposed change to the detached single-family residential in the far west side, there are some additional modifications that come up, and those modifications are included in the table in our staff report. Some of the modifications that are the most notable are first regarding the land use. In the R6 district, which is the underlying zoning district, the detached single-family residential is actually not permitted. In the underlying R6 district, single-family attached and townhouses and apartments, those are among the permitted uses, but to have detached single-family residential is not permitted. So one of the modifications requested is to allow for a detached single-family residential product in an R6 district. There is also some other yard setbacks relating to the R6 district. Because the R6 district does not allow detached single-family residential, it doesn't have the types of setbacks that we typically see for front, side, and rear yard setbacks. In the R6, the types of front, side, and rear yard setbacks that exist are for large multifamily projects where we want a perimeter setback, we want a front yard setback for the units that are closest to the road. So those are not appropriate setbacks when they're applied to a detached single-family residential unit. The proposed setback for the detached single-family residences are as follows, and these are also modifications that are spelled out. The minimum front yard setback would be 22 feet. This is an appropriate width for a driveway between the garage door and the sidewalk to ensure that vehicles are not overhanging the sidewalk. 22 feet is usually about as low as we want for a front yard setback reduction. Next, the minimum side yard setback of 5 feet, and a minimum rear yard setback of 30 feet. Although these setbacks are lower than the single-family residential districts of R1 through R5, they are compatible with a residential development that is predominantly single-family attached residential. So it'll allow for a more dense-looking development there, however less dense than the overall project was approved at. Finally, for the modification request is for the building materials. The submitted plans include elevation pages with material and color specifications. The zoning ordinance requires at least 50% brick, and the plans propose 16 different elevation styles that range from 40.72% to 47.87% brick or masonry stone. All of the building elevations have brick from the grade up to the top of the first story. Because the brick and stone is the predominant building material and is the only exterior wall material proposed on the first story, we recommend approval of the material allocations as proposed on the plans. Finally, with landscaping, we're still in the process of reviewing the landscaping plans. Because of the extent of the changes, we're reviewing the entire site's landscaping again, so that's taking some time. But if the PDD is approved, we can address any landscaping comments at the time of site plan review. So with that, that concludes our staff report. Our recommendation is approval of the Fillmore Place PDD Amendment Number Two, subject to completion of the PDD Agreement Amendment Schedule of Modifications exhibit prior to the Board of Trustees' review of the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick is the project sponsor here. Why don't you head up while we vote to open a public hearing?
Ma'am Chairman, I move to open the public hearing.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Foster to open a public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, public hearing is open. Good evening, sir.
Evening, everyone. I'm Brooks Callen with Pulte Homes alongside Joe Score of Pulte Homes and Matt Bush with Atwell Engineering. Thank you for having us tonight on the amendments, and just wanted to touch on a few points for the PDD Amendment update. Also want to thank Mr. Sloan here for the thorough presentation. Next slide. So here we have the 2020-approved site plan, and we just wanted to highlight in red the area where there'll be changes. The original plan was 192 two-story townhomes and 59 attached single-family. The original developer of this project has approached Pulte and asked if we wanted to be involved in the final phases. So that moves us to our proposal that Patrick went over. We go next slide. So, replacing the townhomes and attached single-family with 100 single-family, four-sale homes. So everyone will have a yard. The eastern portion will remain as rentals, while the western portion will be converted to four-sale units. We do want to point out that we'll be maintaining open space, public amenities, walkways, sidewalks with the amendment, and just wanted to touch on a few of the benefits that we're proposing with our amendment. We go next slide. So we'll be reducing the density by 151 units, thereby reducing some of the traffic. We'll be increasing open space. We'll also be increasing the buffer along the perimeter to the neighboring properties. We will be reducing the impervious area, which causes a reduction in the stormwater runoff as well. Our engineer could talk more about those calculations if you'd like. And as we said, it's less of an impact on the surrounding area and the intersections. With the next slide, sorry. Just wanted to touch on some of the products that we'll be providing for the single family. There'll be approximately 1,900 square feet to 2,600 square feet. Here we have the Oakdale model. I believe that various models were included in the packet, but we just wanted to touch upon some of the examples here. Next slide, we have the Chrisfield, and then next slide, the Aspire, and next slide, the Hampton. So just some of the examples that we'll be offering for people purchasing the single-family homes with this amendment. And with the next slide, just wanted to reiterate, this is in your packet as well, that the site plan will still have the public benefits and public amenities with the community park, the playground, sidewalks on both sides of the street, we'll have bike racks, refuse containers, dog parks, all of that will be included with the amendment to converting the rental units to single-family homeownership. And without a kickback to you with any questions.
Is this a, is this a site condo development then, or are they going to own the land?
It'll be a site condo, but you can buy the individual lot.
Oh, okay, the lot. Okay, thank you.
But it won't be a planted subdivision is what you're suggesting.
It'll still be within a condo subdivision included within the Homeowners Association Agreement. So condo, but then you can buy an individual lot.
All right, so there's a member of the public who, did you have a question, ma'am? Please go up to the mic and we need your name and address for the record, please. Please speak on the mic.
Do we open the public hearing, Madam Chair?
Gail Owens, 8416 Orhan.
Do we open the public hearing?
Yep, we do.
Is 25% reduction in storm drain?
Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am.
We cannot hear you.
Ma'am, we need to address it.
Speak into the mic and address us.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Please give your name and address again, please.
Gail Owens.
Thank you.
8416 Orhan.
Okay, thank you.
25% reduction in storm drains? What is that? There's flooding out there.
Yeah, he needs the mic back, so, yeah. Sorry. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
So we had our civil engineer take a look at the before and after impervious surfaces. So how much concrete or how much roofing will there be with the old site versus the new site? And what they found is that there's an increase in open space, so grass is able to absorb the water, and that reduces the amount of water running into the nearby drainage system. And so, looking at the way that engineers calculate that, they found approximately 25% reduction in anticipated water runoff. And we have our engineer for that for more info?
Ma'am, I thought I heard you say, you thought you heard 25% reduction in storm drain, and that's not what he said. He said 25% reduction in storm runoff, so there'd be less water running off.
Yeah, and maybe your engineer could explain the stormwater management at the property. So I assume you have detention or retention ponds that everything's going to drain into?
Brooks did a pretty good job of explaining...
Could you, I'm sorry, could you introduce yourself?
Yeah, absolutely. Matthew Bush with Atwell.
Could you please speak into the mic, too?
Yeah, Brooks did a pretty good job of explaining the concept here, how this system was approved back in 2020 as a standard detention basin, so it collects the stormwater, releases it at a reduced rate into the existing drain out there. That existing stormwater basin was sized for a much more impervious site, so when you go from the more detailed or dense driveways, parking lots, and multifamily development that we had before, and you convert it to more grass areas, grass yards, you have more infiltration and less runoff. So we did the calculations just based on the different C coefficients or runoff coefficients, and that's how you come up with the less water going into the basin, so the basin's actually oversized, helping with flooding.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ma'am, please go up to the mic and state your name and address for the record. We need you to talk into the mic because otherwise the recording doesn't pick up your voice, so thank you for understanding.
Hi, my name's Janet DJ, and I'm on the Board of Directors at Woodlands of Chatterton Village, which is just north of where you guys are going to be, they're going to be building. So my questions are, are you really going just east of what's built now, or are you going south towards Michigan Avenue? And we're also concerned about the effects of more building in that area and how it's going to impact our community, because when they built the current ones that are there, they took out a bunch of trees, and we have a lot of problems with water flooding back into our neighborhood.
Thank you.
I have a pertinent question. Patrick, is there a limitation on the time? So this was passed in 2020, so it's approved, and there's no limitation on time. So this development's already approved with the condos, original whatever, the higher density?
Yeah, and PUDs are approved for a period of six years, and I think there's extensions based on if they need extensions or phasing in construction. So they're well into their PDD approval.
Okay. So basically, what was prior is approved, and we're getting better right now. So for the public opinion, what we had before was already approved a long time ago, so they could develop what we had before, or this, which is less dense. Is that a good summary?
We're not answering your question yet. Just hold off, please.
Yeah, so what you see on the screen here, this is what was approved in 2020, so a little over five years ago. So what you see on this layout was approved. And if we look outside of the area that is outlined in red, much of the development outside of the red boundary has been developed or is under construction, most notably the road network and the underground utilities. So I'll go to the next slide, and this area that's outlined in red on the west side, that highlights the change. So if we look again outside of that outlined red area, the areas with the brown and orange rooftops, that was previously approved in 2020, and that's under construction, that will be built as-is, including the clubhouse, including the trails, including the preserved woodland area in the north part of the site. If I go back to the previous one, where there's the outlined red area just north of that, there's some green space there. Going to the proposal, that green space is there in the north part of the site. So on the previous plan there, going back, I know I'm jumping back and forth, but I just want to make sure that we're clear on documenting what the area of change is. And it's within that red boundary area, where, within that red boundary, there are 59 attached single-family dwelling units and 192 single-family townhouse units. So that's roughly 251 units within that red area. Those 251 units, they've been approved in the PDD, their site plan has been approved, and if they wanted to pull building permits for those, they could, because they're already approved under their existing PDD. So what the applicant is looking to do is to make a change within that red area, just based on the nature of the development, the housing market. A lot can change over five years, especially the last five years that we've had.
Wait, what happened in the last five years?
We've been through some things.
Some things, yeah.
So it's, for a project this large and for a PDD lasting as long as they do, we're not really surprised when there's a change, and sometimes, you know, we look at the changes to see what the impacts are. And in this case, the area of impact that they outline in red, it's fewer units, there's less impervious surface, less stormwater impact, and also fewer cars on the road based on the fewer units. So oftentimes, you know, going to less density can be seen as a good thing, depending on the availability of the infrastructure and the surrounding area. That was just one of several factors that we took into account when we made our recommendation. So going back to this plan here, the area outlined in red, it shows the removal of 251 units and then adding 100 units back that are not attached units but detached single-family residential.
Okay, so the question on the floor, though, is about the water runoff and flooding in the adjacent north property. So can we talk a little bit about that, what might be happening and what might be causing some flooding on the adjacent property? That might be a question for the engineer, I don't know.
I'm currently not aware of any flooding going out there. We're more than happy to take a look if there's any point to consider.
Ma'am, ma'am, wait. Ma'am, ma'am, wait, I'm sorry, you can't shout out at a meeting like this? Well, I'm sorry, but we have a process, so we have to, you have to respect it. But like I said earlier, ma'am, like I said earlier, no one can hear you on the recording, and that will be on YouTube if you don't speak into a microphone. And we also have a process here that we ask you to respect, that we need to.
Let me just clarify one second. You said we're not answering your question. The question I heard you ask was whether this, there's any more development going towards Michigan Avenue? Did I hear that correctly? And then towards the east also, was that your, did I hear that correctly? That was, that was, did I repeat that correctly? Okay, okay.
Right, we're working on answering your questions, ma'am, but please stop interrupting us to do that. You interrupted us before he jumped in to ask you questions, ma'am, so I'm just asking you to please be patient. Sir, could you? And who are you?
My name's Kevin Spizizen, we're the developer of Fillmore Place Apartments.
Thank you, Kevin, okay.
Just to answer the question, we are not going any further east, west. Those hundred lots are in the exact same spot that the two hundred and approximately fifty units would be, so there is no additional land. It's the exact same, ninety-seven acres. And again, the boundary of, as Patrick has shown, the boundary is the exact same, that red boundary, but instead of putting the two hundred and fifty approximate apartment rentals, they're going to put a hundred homes. And on the water, they've always had a water problem in that area. All water from our property goes into our detention ponds, which, like they said, is oversized. As we've done construction, we put in the entire detention system, or at least eighty percent, so it's been oversized the entire time of the project. And again, all water goes into our ponds on the south side of the property, closest to Michigan Avenue. So there's really no runoff, additional runoff from our property that you had before.
Could the neighbors reach out to you to discuss any issues with flooding?
They could, but again, there were issues, I believe the city was aware of before, in the back of the property and on the sides with, with water, even before we started the project.
Right, but they're saying it's worse now, so.
They could reach out, but like I said, all our water is contained on our property.
Okay, and how would they reach out to you?
They could call us, I mean.
Call the development?
Yeah, Fillmore, yeah.
Okay, Fillmore?
Our number, our main office number is the only number on the project right now, so it'd go directly to our main office.
Okay, very good. And you're not expanding this project north, southeast, or west?
No, no.
To stay within the same boundaries?
Same boundaries, and the hundred lots are in the exact same boundary as the two hundred and fifty units would have been on.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Could that answer your question, ma'am?
I wanted to clarify something. So the proper protocol is for you to reach out to the county, not this developer, because you're handling your own stormwater, you can't drain off-site into adjacent properties. So if Chatterton has a current issue with the drainage, Wayne County is the jurisdiction that mandates all that. There could be a clogged drain, there could be some issue at Chatterton. I've seen your place flood. That one storm event, all your streets were flooded. However, across the way, over at Metal Villages, it was dry. So I think there's, there may be a problem with your particular site, and the county could possibly assist in that. I don't think your developer is going to assist you, because they're managing their own site, is that correct?
Yeah, all the water from our site, I mean, we have like twenty-five acres of detention pond, or twenty-acre detention pond on there. That holds all the water for the project. And like they said, it's actually, was overbuilt. The piping's overbuilt and the pond's now overbuilt, because we won't have as much runoff, because the lots that the houses provide have lawns, there's less roads, so there'll be less water going into, again, it's still our system, but there'll be less going into our system.
So the way these are designed is, for you to get a permit from Wayne County for your development, they're not going to permit you to drain north into Chatterton. There's no way they'd allow that.
Yeah, all water has to be cut down on the property.
That's exactly right. So their design has to be contained, I guess, and managed. So if Chatterton has an issue, I would encourage you to contact the county and see what measures can be taken.
Thank you, Commissioner Cruz, I appreciate that clarification, so, thank you. All right, anyone else from the audience want to speak about the project?
Madam Chair, may I move to close the public hearing?
All right. Thank you. All right, we have a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Watkins. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I am going to start with Commissioner Watkins.
Thank you so much. So, to the developer, I will tell you, yeah, there was a certain thing that happened in two thousand twenty that affected the marketability of your previous design. So it makes sense that you'd go back and you'd look at it and you'd reconfigure it. Just two questions. Number one, where are you on the phase that, on the west side of Beck? I think that's the low-rise senior, I think that's yours as well. Where are you on occupancy there? And then the second is, as a person who lived in Metal Villages for many years, I feel the pain of this young lady who's in the audience. Again, I think Commissioner Cruz really explained it very, very well. It's going to be the county's responsibility to help that. Chatterton used to flood almost, it came right up to the abutted Metal Villages, but it never came to us, so that's a design issue, wholeheartedly for that development. And it's sad that it happens, but that's not your problem. So my second question was, as you head back, it looks like you headed back west towards Michigan, how far back do you go to the LI, the light industrial that, that's right there on Michigan Avenue?
I mean, it's hard to say, but are you asking how much construction?
Yes, absolutely.
So the first phase, this first ninety units is completely built and occupied?
Yes.
Then we broke it down into Phase Two A, which is this right here. That is completely built. We have four buildings to go in here just to finish the interiors, and everything that is up so far is occupied.
And how much are you buffered behind the light industrial at Michigan?
Oh, we, I mean, our buffer, this is all our retention. And then there's a stream that goes through here, a river, and then the way on the other side.
Got it. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, and this is the science drain that separates the subject property from the industrial property to the south.
Yeah, I knew something was back there, that there was an additional drain. I wanted to make sure that was there. Thank you.
All right, very good. Commissioner Lee?
What, just curiosity, I have no problem. The only question I have is, what market, what price points are you looking at?
We range from about twenty-one fifty to twenty-four fifty.
Okay, rental?
Rental, yes.
What about the purchase?
Four models and base.
Be near the mic. I mean, your voice carries, but I'm not sure.
Too far from the mic? Reached over. Base model starts on the low fours, and then with premium and options, you can go into the high fours to low fives.
Okay, right in the middle, thank you. That's all I have.
All right, Commissioner Weber?
I don't have any further questions, Madam Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Foster?
I don't have any questions. I will just mention that I am always happy to downsize and to reduce density and traffic.
Absolutely, all right. And Commissioner Cruz, our resident civil engineer.
So you guys received Wayne County approval for this master-planned PDD previously, is that right?
That is correct, yeah, in order to develop the.
You know what year that was, two thousand twenty?
Not exactly, but probably around there. It would say, it would be concurrently with the approvals through the township, yes.
So I'm going to alert you to something, that because you're changing it, you'll likely have to go back to Wayne County, and the rule change came at two thousand twenty-one. And so they may make you do some alterations. I don't think they'll make you increase the size of your ponds, but there may be restrictor and forbear alterations possible as a result of that.
Yeah, understood. We're familiar with the new rules and that, and because we have so much additional free board in that base, we don't have any concerns.
Yeah, it shouldn't be an issue, yep. That's all I got.
Yep, thank you for.
Mr. Janowski?
No comment.
All right, and I share Commissioner Foster's thoughts about lowering density where we can, so, especially in parking lots, but this, in this situation as well. So with that, anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Now go ahead, Mr. Serrano.
I move to recommend approval of Amendment Two to the Fillmore Place Plan Development District on the project parcels number one-two-five-dash-nine-nine-dash-zero-zero-zero-two-dash-seven-one-zero, as provided in the Plan Development Agreement Amendment and Plan Documents Subject to Completion of the PD Agreement Amendment Schedule of Modifications Exhibit Prior to Township Board Review of the Application.
All right, do we have support?
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Foster and support by Commissioner Weber. Any further discussion? All right, Commissioner Lee, could you call the vote, please?
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee, yes. Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner, Chairperson Zuber?
Yes, motion carries. We wish you the best, thank you. All right, next up on our agenda, we have the item number zero-five-eight. SLU eight-six-six-eight, which is the Clean Express Car Wash. We're considering special land use for parcel number zero-five-eight-dash-nine-nine-dash-zero-zero-zero-three-dash-seven-two-three, also known as four-five-zero-zero-one Ford Road. Property is located on the south side of Ford Road and east of North Canton Center Road, and they're proposing to build an automobile wash establishment. Patrick, please tell us more.
Sure, thank you. I'll wait for the packet here to unfreeze, but if it doesn't, I'll restart it. But.
It's a big packet.
Yeah, I know, I wouldn't be surprised if I have to restart it, but that's fine. The proposal for Clean Express Car Wash is, the applicant proposes to construct an automobile wash establishment, a car wash, west of the Meyer store at forty-five thousand and one Ford Road. The proposed location is in the existing parking lot on the south side of the site, west of Meyer, and east of Antonio's parking lot. The site is zoned C-two, and car washes are special land uses in the C-two district. So just jumping ahead to the end of our staff report, our overall recommendation is that the planning commission postpone action on the application. There are a number of items that we note in our staff review that are, need to either be included or revised as part of the application in order for us to complete a full analysis of the special land use in accordance with twenty-seven-point-zero-three-C of the zoning ordinance. Because we don't find that it meets all the standards based on the information presented, our recommendation at this point is for the planning commission to hold the public hearing, to have deliberations, and then at the end of that, postpone action on the application to allow the applicant the opportunity to revise plans, submit additional information that addresses the comments in our staff report, as well as any comments that come up during the public hearing and during the planning commission's deliberations. In my, today I had exchanged some emails and talked to one of the applicant's representatives, and the applicant was in agreement with postponing. They want to submit some additional materials to respond to staff's report. And so I let the applicant know that, that our recommendation for postponement would still be there, and that in addition to the things that we noted in our staff report, there may be comments from the public during the public hearing that come up, so we wanted to keep the public hearing as scheduled, and also comments from the planning commission during its deliberations. So after going through the staff review, the comments from the public and deliberations, we recommend postponing to allow the applicant an opportunity to respond to that and possibly revise the materials, to submit new materials. So back to the staff report itself, there are several areas of the zoning ordinance that regulate car washes and the proposed development. And in Section six-point-zero-two-D of the zoning ordinance, there are eight standards of review that apply to car washes. Both, it includes minimum lot size, the layout, the entrances and exits, drying facilities, orientation of the bays, heated exit ramp, the water runoff system, and having video monitors. Those development standards are a little bit more technical in nature. So a lot of those are for protecting adjacent neighborhoods and residences, making sure there's sufficient room for vehicles to maneuver on the site and getting out of the site, both safely and efficiently, because of the operations of a car wash are unlike any other type of use. Doesn't look like this is going to reload, so that's fine, I'll.
Got the blue circle of death? Yeah, I've been there.
Let me close it. If not, I'll do the old Ctrl-Alt-Delete. All right. That'll just take a moment, but while we're waiting. So the applicant has submitted a traffic impact study, or a traffic impact analysis that just looks at the trip distribution, the traffic impact, and looks at pulling cars from Canton Center Road and Ford Road. The traffic impact analysis cites four existing car wash facilities within a two-mile radius as examples of similar sizes, amenities, and traffic volumes. And these are included in the traffic impact assessment just to illustrate on the applicant's behalf in terms of traffic impact and how those operate and how they don't expect, you know, really heavy traffic. They do indicate also that a number of the trips will be pass-by trips or bypass trips. In other words, somebody may be at the site anyway, they may be at Meyer, they may be at Culvers, and then with a car wash on the site, they would, they would use the car wash while they were there. So in other words, it doesn't generate a new trip to the site. For the parking, the parking calculations comply with the zoning ordinance. There appears to be sufficient stacking for twenty-five cars, but that's a detail that we need to see on the plan. There has to be shown on the plan room for twenty-five cars to stack in the lane. There probably are, and the lane for the one wash bay is three cars wide. So here's a layout of the building itself. As you can see, it's just west of Meyer, just east of Antonio's, and to the south is Walden Woods Residential Community. And this car wash building, the cars will go southward through the pay station, and then turn a hundred and eighty degrees, go northward through the car wash, and then the cars would have the option of going back into the building on the east side where there are some proposed indoor vacuums. With the proposed reduction in the parking spaces, the proposed car wash would reduce the Meyer parking capacity by a hundred and fifty-two spaces. It would go from seven-ninety-five to six-forty-three. Based on our review of aerial photos and the Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Generation Manual, based on the size of the building, we still think reducing this number of parking spaces would allow for sufficient parking for the Meyer building. Rarely are there cars parked there, in looking at aerial photos, and when there are cars parked there, having those parked a little farther north to the proposed spaces that would remain would be sufficient for these use. So in principle, repurposing this parking lot for another use can work and can allow for sufficient parking still at the Meyer store. We have some comments about the architecture of the building and the landscaping and screening. There aren't too many detailed comments about that that can't be addressed in revised materials, but we do note some concerns about the prospective screening on the south side of the site adjacent to Walden Woods. The reason being is that there is a bay door. side of the site adjacent to Walden Woods. The reason being is that there is a bay door on the south side of the building, and that bay door is facing southward toward Walden Woods. So there is some landscaping and screening that's south of it, but there's also some grass area here where there's an opportunity for even more screening there to connect with Walden Wood, or to to buffer from Walden Wood. There are currently no sidewalks that are connected with the proposed car wash. There is one connecting sidewalk to Walden Wood, and we'll get into this in a moment in terms of some of our concerns with the car wash proposal, is that there's a sidewalk connecting Walden Wood to Meyer to the north. So there is a sidewalk connection between the two developments where someone who lives at Walden Wood, who either may not be able to drive or may not choose to drive, would be able to walk to Meyer. When they're on the Meyer site, this might not come in too clearly, but there's a crosswalk that goes across the loading drive here. At the southwest, or southwest corner of the building, it's, there's not a dedicated walkway to get from the southwest corner of the building to the entrance doors on the north side of the building. So a pedestrian or someone on a bike, they would be competing with motorized traffic down this lane. Right now, it's not as heavily trafficked, but with a prospective land use change, it's something that we take a closer look at in terms of potential impacts on pedestrian traffic. And it's not something that's conceptual. It's a sidewalk and a walkway that's there. It encourages residents nearby to use it to access the store. The, the next part of the letter that we want to go into after the development standards themselves are the review standards of Section 27.03(c) of the zoning ordinance. This part of the zoning ordinance has eight criteria that have to be met in order for a special land use to be approved. And this section requires all standards of Section 27.03(c) to be met. So not just some standards or most standards, all the standards have to be met. The first standard is compatibility with adjacent land uses. And as we noted, with the prospective or potential incompatibilities with the surrounding areas, we start with the site to the south, Walden Woods. Walden Woods is a residential area zoned for residential use. And so having an auto, autocentric use directly north, it introduces an incompatibility of a land use, both from the operation standpoint, possible noise, lighting, traffic, and not just the line between the two uses, but as I noted previously, there are pedestrians between Walden Wood and Meyer. To the, to the west is a restaurant. There's two restaurants. So there's Antonio's, there's Shakers, and then also Einstein Bagels. And so those are restaurant uses adjacent to a car wash could potentially have incompatibility. And then farther north off of the image here is Culvers to the north. So there are concerns that we have with the incompatibility of adjacent land uses, notably incompatibility with the adjacent residential use to the south. The second criteria is compatibility with the master plan. With the recently adopted master plan, there are several policies and recommendations that are in the master plan that relate to infill development, redevelopment, especially with large parking lots that are underutilized. And in the examples in the master plan, it includes non-auto-oriented uses. It includes pedestrian access. It includes usable open space to connect those vacant parking areas to its surrounding uses. In this case, there's residential to the south with an existing pedestrian connection. There are restaurants to the west that could potentially benefit from redevelopment of the parking space. But redevelopment for a car wash use doesn't really provide a mutual benefit, and doesn't provide the type of infill development in commercial that the master plan is recommending. The third criteria is the impact on the public services. The site is designed to adequately be serviced by streets, drives, emergency service, drainage, water, and sewer, although those evaluations are made in more detail by our engineering division and our public works division. Although the proposed car wash would be technically adequately accessed by a nearby road network, its distance is about 300 feet from that network, and the visibility is limited from Canton Center Road. So that raises some concerns in terms of being readily accessible from a road network, because it's a little bit of a drive to get even from Canton Center Road, the most efficient point, to take Canton Center Road roughly 300, 300 feet east to to the car wash. Plus, with the existing landscaping along Canton Center Road that's mature, the visibility would be limited to the car wash. So in terms of the accessibility and the visibility from the road, this location doesn't really provide that, especially with an auto-oriented type of use where someone's pulling off from the road, they want easy access. Having it far from the road makes it challenging for this type of use. The fourth criteria is the impact on traffic. As we note, the proximity to North Canton Center Road, about 300 feet away, and partially concealed by existing buildings and development along the roadway, is a concern for an auto-related use that relies heavily on easy access and clear visibility from the road network. Therefore, there may not be adequate site distances for drivers on North Canton Center Road and Ford Road. Also, the car wash may be detrimental to pedestrian traffic as well between Walden Wood to the south and Meyer to the east. The fifth criteria is detrimental effects. And our finding here is that the proposed car wash use would include traffic and activity that is incompatible with the adjacent residential area to the south and the pedestrian network between Walden Wood and Meyer. Also, a proposed car wash use would deter the types of infill redevelopment that's recommended by the master plan, just because of proposed infill. We want to have pedestrian networks. We want walkability. We want to cohesively connect separate uses. So for example, on a site like this, where there are restaurants to the west and retail to the east, there are some opportunities there between the two uses to have pedestrian networks, to have compatible development, where it could be pedestrian-friendly, and and both uses could benefit from each other to the east and the west. And the car wash really doesn't do that. It also includes some impediments in terms of walking, you know, through a car wash use or around a car wash use to get from a restaurant to a retail. The sixth criteria is whether the development would enhance the surrounding environment. The proposed car wash use does not appear to enhance the surrounding environment to the west, which are sit-down restaurants, to the south, which is a residential development, east, which is Meyer Retail, and to the north, which is Culvers. Within those four surrounding areas, a car wash use is incompatible with those types of uses. Within the adjacent developments at the southeast corner of Ford and North Canton Center Road, the former Spoons Place Restaurant and the former Wendy's Restaurant are vacant. And as Canton is encouraging the reoccupancy and possible redevelopment of restaurant spaces, or potentially any vacant space, having a car wash nearby could add some incompatibility, and could make some vacancies more difficult to occupy or to redevelop in an area where autocentric uses add a lot of incompatibility. The seventh criteria is isolation of existing uses. The proposed car wash is incompatible with surrounding uses on the four adjacent sides when considered collectively. If the infill redevelopment recommendations of the master plan are seeking to recommend compatible uses and development that complement and enhance the surrounding areas by attracting pedestrians and compatible land uses, then the car wash would not be a fit based on the master plan recommendations. Finally, the eighth criteria is the contribution to the economic well-being and welfare of Canton Township and excessive duplication of goods and services. The standard states that the petitioner must demonstrate that the proposed use will enhance the economic well-being and welfare of the township, and does not result in excessive duplication of provision of goods and services within the community. The proposed car wash use appears to result in excessive duplication of car wash uses in the area. There are currently six existing car wash businesses within an approximate four-mile radius. These six car washes are, first, there's Canton City Car Wash on the east side of North Canton Center Road, just north of the Speedway. Second, there's Quick Pass Car Wash on the west, on the west side of Old Canton Center Road. There is, yeah, this says Old Canton Center Road, but it's really Canton Center Road, and the Quick Pass Car Wash is to the north. This address that's here is incorrect. This is the Quick Pass location that's closer to Michigan Avenue. The car wash at the, at the gas station at the southeast corner of Canton Center Road and Cherry Hill Road, that's less than a mile away. That second one, that Quick Pass Car Wash, that's the one farther north on the west side of Canton Center Road, north of Hanford. Fourth, there is Mr. Car Wash that is at 2104 North Hagerty Road, just south of Ford Road on the east side of Hagerty. There's Canton Auto Wash, which is at 45425 Michigan Avenue. That is on the south side of Michigan Avenue, east of Belleville Road. And then there is Zippy Auto Wash, located on Michigan Avenue at the southwest corner of Michigan Avenue and Beck. Also, I did note here the Quick Pass on Old Canton Center Road. That one would also be within a four-mile radius. So I think if I'm adding up right, that would be seven car washes within the area. But if, I'll go through again. If my math is incorrect, I'll, I'll correct that. But it looks as though there are between six and seven car washes that are existing within a four-mile radius of the site. And our concern with potential excessive duplication of the use is that with so many car washes within a certain proximity of the area, we're concerned about what kind of market there is for car wash uses within that area, especially when taking into account how far someone will typically drive to get a car wash. So we've requested a market study from the applicant, and the applicant has submitted a market study. The market study includes a lot of information that's more of a macro level analysis for car wash trends nationwide, and it doesn't specifically address this site or the local market. The market analysis states that 75% of customers will drive nine minutes or less for a car wash, and 51% of customers will drive five minutes or less for a car wash. So based on this, the market study states that car washes are a convenience-based purchase, and that customers are unlikely to drive out of their way for a car wash. So this part of the analysis raises two major concerns with staff regarding the viability of a car wash. First, the proposed car wash's distance from North Canton Center Road and Ford Road does not make it easily identifiable to motorists along those roads who are seeking the convenience of a car wash. And second, the aforementioned six, and it looks like seven, car washes currently exist within an approximately nine-minute drive time. And those seven, there's two north on Canton Center Road. There's one at Ford and Hagerty. There's one at the corner of Cherry Hill and Canton Center. There's two near the intersection of Michigan and Canton Center Belleville Road, and then one at the intersection of Michigan and Beck. So that, that makes seven. That excludes the car wash at Canton City Car Wash north of Speedway. There's actually a self-wash behind that building, so they have both an automatic wash and a self-wash. But that one will only count as one. But it just shows the abundance of car wash services in the area. So looking at the seven car washes that are currently within an approximate nine-minute drive time of the subject site, the source there is Placer AI. Canton Township has a, an account with Placer AI where we can do a number of different analyses with economics and drive times and market analysis. And so using our subscription, we looked at the nine-minute drive time from that area, and I think it encompassed all seven existing car washes that we previously noted. So if we're looking at, based on the market analysis, if 75% of customers will drive nine minutes or less for a car wash within that nine-minute drive area, according to our Placer AI analysis, there are seven existing car washes within that nine-minute area. And those are just car washes in Canton Township. I think it might, the nine-minute drive might also pick up one car wash in Westland at the intersection of Ford and Newburgh, although it's debatable whether that's a nine-minute drive time, depending on when you're driving it. So the market study acknowledges the existing car wash businesses in close proximity, and makes some distinctions on their levels of service. But the market study quickly transitions to comparing the number of car wash businesses in the area with existing coffee shops, banks, and grocery stores, which are not appropriate comparisons when determining a car wash use. They should be more of an apples-to-apples in terms of a car wash service. I don't see a relationship between someone using a car wash, you know, however many times a month they may do that, and how many times a month they may go to the grocery store, or get coffee, or go out to eat. Like uses should be compared to each other. Uses that are not alike, we can't really make direct comparisons unless there's something in the market study that indicates that we can do that. Although the applicant states in the market study that they have a history of developing car washes, and their site selection is based on proprietary performance data, the market study does not include data that indicates market demand for another car wash use in this particular area. The market study states that Placer AI is used to monitor market trends. Because Canton Township has a subscription to Placer AI, we're able to look at a number of different things that we can be pointed to, to see, we can review something that's there. So I don't think much on Placer AI is proprietary. I think it can be accessed with an account. So if there's something there that they'd like us to look at, we can use our Placer AI account to look at that, and see if we can add any additional market data that could, could help with this application, either to inform the Planning Commission, or to express something that the petitioner is stating in the market analysis. Also, unlike many other types of buildings and land uses, that can be repurposed if they are unsuccessful. A car wash use is a single-use building. If a car wash use was to go vacant, there are not many other uses that you could repurpose it for, other than a car wash, not without some very expensive remodels, which might not make that economically feasible. Conversely, if there's a multi-tenant center, if one commercial tenant moves out, another commercial tenant can move in, sometimes with some interior remodels. So if we have someone as a salon, and a restaurant wants to move in, there may be some interior remodels to make sure it meets code for restaurants. But it's a pretty typical type of reoccupancy that we see for multi-tenant centers. The same could be said for restaurant buildings being repurposed, retail stores. If a restaurant building that, you know, serves hamburgers, goes out of business, and another restaurant that specializes in chicken, then there are many different types of tastes and styles that can be repurposed for a restaurant. That's not really the case with a car wash. There are some distinctions in terms of levels of service for car washes, but nothing like the wide array of types of food, or types of coffee, or types of retail, or types of day-to-day services. Therefore, if a vacant car wash building, if a car wash building becomes vacant, whether it's the building that's being proposed, or a nearby car wash within the same trade area, the same market area, that car wash building could potentially be a blight in the community, and it could negatively impact property values and development potential nearby if there's a building that becomes vacant, and it's a single-use building, especially with redevelopment nearby. Having redevelopment nearby a vacant building that is a long-term vacancy would make redevelopment more challenging, especially in an area like this, within the Meyer area, all of the drives connect, and between the Spoons Building and the former Wendy's at the Tim Horton Building, those are two pretty significant vacancies in that block. We're hopeful that those vacancies can be filled, but we don't know the timetable or what could come in the future for those. So the potential of having additional vacancy within the area, even outside of this block here with Meyer, going a little bit further out, for example, the old Joann Fabric site, that portion of the building is vacant. So looking at vacancies within a few minutes' drive time, if, for example, there's a se- So looking at vacancies within a few minutes' drive time, if, for example, there's a saturation of car wash uses and one or more car wash businesses go out of business, those are even more vacancies in this area and create issues because of the redevelopment potential could be lower. For that reason, the criteria number eight in this analysis requires the applicant to demonstrate that the proposed car wash use will not result in excessive duplication of car wash services in the community. So that, that concludes our staff analysis for the special land use application. Again, we recommend postponing action on this application based on the special land use application materials not providing sufficient information to demonstrate compliance with the standards of Section 27.03(c) of the zoning ordinance, as well as the applicable development standards of the zoning ordinance, as noted by staff. And we also recommend with a motion to postpone, also pending receipt of revised application materials from the applicant that demonstrate compliance with those standards. We make a number of findings in our report where we don't think those standards are met. But at the same time, we would like to have the applicant take an opportunity to respond to staff's report, respond to any public comments and deliberations that take place this evening, and perhaps submit some revised materials or some new materials that could address those standards in the ordinance and in our staff letter. So that concludes our staff report, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Is the project sponsor present? Sir, if you could come to the mic, and in the meantime, could we motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All right, I have motion by Commissioner Lee and support by Commissioner Foster. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, sir, please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Jake Ralet with the Manik and Smith Group. We're the design engineer for this project. I live in 808 North Ulan Rochester Hills. As Patrick mentioned in his presentation, we just received this staff report on Friday with a couple additional information requests, especially with regards to the feasibility, or, I'm blanking on what it's called, the market, market study, there we go. Yeah. So we want to agree with the postponement and make sure we can adequately address and show the ways that we are meeting all these requirements, especially of Section 27.3. Just give you a little clearer view of our plans to address all these items, and then, as well as the market feasibility for a wash like this. In the meantime, I'm happy to answer any questions you do have about the site or design, as well as any public feedback we can get.
Okay, very good. And I saw a hand raised. Sir, did you, do you want to come to the mic and ask your question or make your comment, sir?
My name is Mike Moir. I represent the condo association board.
Which one, sir?
Well, it would be called Carriage Park. I just want to compliment the work that has been done by whomever looked at this car wash Personally, I think it's a disaster. We have people that are old folks home, right? We have, we have the Waltonwood facility, which is only about, I'd say a tenth, maybe a quarter, no more than a quarter yard away, I mean, more than a yard, but very close. Okay. We have, I represent 87 condos at Carriage Park. And to think that, and I think Patrick did such a terrific job of recognizing all the other car washes that are in a very short area. Matter of fact, there's two from where they want to build, you could walk to the car wash, the one down on Canton Center past Ford Road, and that would be heading north. And I really think it's just kind of, you know, I really don't believe that anyone should be building something like a car wash, or quite frankly, anything else there, because in my experience, and I walked that area quite a bit, I've seen semi-trucks that are parked there who deliver to the Meyer store, into the back. It does provide them a place, I assume many of them come in through the night, early morning, and I think some of their drivers are resting, you know, before they head back or reload. And having that car wash about right in the area where those trucks park would be quite amusing. And I think I've also seen that parking area, you know, halfway to three-quarters full. I agree it's not full all the time. It's a very large area. But I have seen it where it's been about half-full. Meyer's, of course, is a very busy store, and then we have the restaurant, and that's a great restaurant. I think all of you probably have eaten there. It's damn good Italian food, and I sure don't want to mess them up, or some of the other restaurants that are around that area. So I just very thankful to all of you for consideration of saying no to that, okay? And we do appreciate it, and thank you for taking some of your time.
Sir, anyone else? Give us your name and address again for the record.
Gail Owens, 8416 Orham. I just feel that there's so much traffic there already, and to, it says that the address is 45001 Ford Road. It's not on Ford Road, correct? It's, I mean, how can they use that address? I mean, Ford Road's enough traffic, but they use that, and it's not on Ford Road? So, I mean, like, we have six, seven car washes already, who needs another one? You know, I don't feel Canton Township needs tax money that badly they're going to plop one down in the middle of a parking lot.
Thank you. Patrick, do you want to address the address?
Yes. So in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, when we do our notices, the notice requires us to have the address of the property if it has one. And because it's on the Meyer parcel, and I'll bring that up on the aerial map just so, just so that we see it. So in this, in the dark yellow that is drawn showing what the car wash area is, but the light yellow line all around it, that's the Meyer parcel. So that's the entirety of the Meyer parcel. It's a little irregular, but not really uncommon. And on this parcel, the address is 45,001 Ford Road.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would close the public hearing.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Watkins to close the public hearing. All, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, public hearing is closed. So I'm going to start with Commissioner Janowski this time. No comment? Okay. Commissioner Cruz, you probably have something to say. Would be surprised if you didn't.
I don't, actually. There's a lot of items that you brought up. So, I mean, you said mostly everything.
Well, that's kind of my question.
And then some.
Can we wait till it's your turn?
Yeah, I just want to ask Patrick for procedural question.
Oh, okay.
I mean, you've already asked us to table this tonight. I don't, if there's going to be a bunch of revisions and all that, I don't really understand the point of us deliberating this tonight.
There may not be much deliberation before making a motion, but if the motion is to postpone, and that motion ultimately carries, if there's any deliberations among the planning commission or any other information, or any, anything to share with the applicant that could help them in their next step of potentially revising.
I just asked because I hear both commissioners so far saying that there's so much to talk about that they don't really have comments. I just understand, wondering how productive this is going to be tonight, that's all. But we can go on, it's fine.
All right. Commissioner Cruz, did you have anything else to add?
No, I don't.
All right, very good. Commissioner Foster.
I mean, I guess I'll say something.
Okay.
I think this is a terrible place for a car wash. I think I have always been a proponent of using parking lot space, but I don't think this is what we had in mind. And so I think that that should definitely be reconsidered.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Weber.
I echo Commissioner Foster's feelings about this location. I'm, I'm usually not one to poo-poo anyone who wants to come invest the money in a business in the community, but we have to look at location, and granted, I know this parking lot's not ever full, but there is a lot of traffic through there, and I just think introducing something like, like this use, I think, is a horrible idea.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee.
Yes, I would. Let me ask, what is, what's the price? Do you have a monthly rate? Do you have a?
So, yeah, there's a both subscription-based plan as well as single-use.
What is that? What is about that?
So I'm, I'm the design engineer, I'm not as far as.
So you don't know that.
I know they have a multiple different-tiered pricing plan options. I think it starts out as low as like eight a month.
That's fine.
You can find it on their website.
Yeah. But let me, a couple things. One, are you asking for a sign on Ford Road? Because I'm going to tell you personal experience.
No, there would not be a sign on Ford Road.
Now, I'm going to tell you why I'm asking. Quick car wash, quick pass, I cannot see from Canton Center Road. All I see is the sign. That's why I know it's there. Only way I found it, my wife said, there's the sign. So I'm asking that because that is one of your problems, I think, too, if you're trying to get people in there. I think you will get people going to this car wash, because you have one added thing that caught my eye, indoor vacuums. Now, I thought that was good from a design standpoint, because I haven't seen that before. The other thing that I think you're going to have is, the traffic, I think, is an issue for you here, because right now, I use this area all the time. Usually, if I can't make a left turn going south, I might come down to this exit way because it's a little easier, sometimes. Everybody's figured that out like I have. So now I see that loading up now. So, and at bad traffic times, it's hard to get southbound out of that parking lot. You got Meyer's, Antonelli's, you got this. That could be an added issue. So I'm going to just compliment, compliment you for the report you did do, because you pretty much hit everything. And a subtle thing that he brought up that was really interesting to me was the fact that if we continue to approve these, someone may go out of business. And what that means is, what do you do with it? And that's what he was pointing at. So it's like, we were kind of caught that we could tip it to a point where somebody's going to go, and we can't use the building. What do you do? You got to tear it all down again. It's not reusable. So that, that's all good. Patrick, I give you a compliment on your report. You did well.
Can we do self-storage in it, maybe?
Maybe, maybe.
Can we make a chicken restaurant?
Yeah, chicken, drive-through chicken restaurant. Anyway, okay, Commissioner Watkins.
Just real quick, no procedural questions at all, just really quickly for the development consultant, Manik. Who's the developer? Who's your client?
Clean Express Car Wash is a company based out of Columbus, Ohio. They run about 125 or so car washes across the Midwest.
Gotcha. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am chair.
Yeah, no, and I.
Don't hold that against them.
I share the concerns that have been expressed in the staff report and by the commission, just that the, the location just does not seem conducive to a car wash. And I'm kind of surprised we didn't have any representatives from the surrounding restaurants or Meyer to talk about this, this evening. But I have real serious concerns. I, I drive on Canton Center Road every day, twice a day often, but, you know, that just seems like a lot of traffic. Commissioner Lee mentioned that exit just south of there to go south on Canton Center Road, which is towards my home. That is, it can be very busy to get out of there, and I think if you have an auto-centric use in there, it will just be way more busy. But I, I agree, like, like Commissioner Foster said, the, you know, the outlets, I think, you know, we want to use those outlets. We want to take up the parking and put something else in. But to me, a, a drive-through restaurant or something like that is a much more compatible use with what's around, so, for what it's worth.
If I can give some responses to some of these concerns here.
Please, please, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to alleviate some of the concerns. So as far as other car washes in the vicinity, they do, expressed this pretty extensive market research, especially with this particular building, the, the indoor vac building, it represents a much, more significant investment than their standard building. It's really kind of their, the crown jewel of their, the different options that they can put in there. They wouldn't just plop this in anywhere that they didn't know it was going to work. It's a pretty heavy investment. As far as quantity of other washes in the area, four miles is actually quite a bigger radius than they generally look at. Like I said, they've got about 125 of these throughout the Midwest, and really, they find, you know, anything outside of a mile, especially in highly populated areas, is really not too heavily impacted. One in this location with the Meyer especially isn't as much of a concern about visibility setback off Canton Road, because you've got that north visibility to that whole Meyer parking lot that basically the entire area is coming to get their groceries to all the time. With the subscription model, once people know it's there, it's, it's pretty, it keeps itself busy. And they don't generally generate a lot of new trips. Like, it is a traffic-intensive use, a car wash, but like, it was mentioned in the report, this is not traffic that people are getting out of their, getting out of their house and saying, I'm going to go get a car wash and come right back home. These are cars that are already in the area, already doing their shopping, going to this culvers, going to these other uses. So it's not generating a whole lot of new trips to the area, especially particularly on this site to address some of those crosswalk concerns with the building. There's really no reason for anyone to go on the east side. We worked heavily with Meyer on the design. They didn't want, we initially had some parking spaces and things along that east side of the site, and Meyer said, we want to keep everything as much as we can on the west side, keep that crosswalk area clear, as well as that is one of Meyer's delivery areas. We don't, the site's configured in a way to discourage anyone from going past the site to the east. With some of the other kind of market study aspects, four, seven washes within four miles, some of those are sort of different types of car washes that we don't consider to be direct business model competition, such as washes that are attached to gas stations or mechanics. So there's only four or five of these, I think it's four, of these washes that are direct business model competitors.
Most of those are direct business model. There's only one that's a car wash attached to a gas station.
Yep, either way, I mean, the.
We know a car wash.
Oh, yeah. I mean, we had a similar presentation in Pittsfield earlier this week where it was 14 washes within three miles. So this is generally, I don't know how much of the proprietary data they are willing to share and stuff, but I know I can tell you that compared to Columbus, where this is based out of, the whole Detroit area is generally underserved with washes per car in the area, and they view it.
I see that when I drive around with dirty cars.
Yeah, generally, they, as far as washes per car per month, they see it as about five per month here, and whereas other places where they're more established is, is up to seven. And this model focuses on more of a, it's kind of like, compare it to the old Starbucks model. Nobody thought they wanted a $5 cup of coffee every day, but then they built them all and they created their own demand. And that's, they see that effect with car washes when the subscription models, when you buy a subscription, somebody that may wash their car once a month, all of a sudden they're doing it two, three times a week because it's free. And it really generates its own business, and their, their passes, we've got several of these under construction in Michigan, there's about 10 to 12 open already with several more on the way. They're good at all locations. So it's really a network that increases the demand as you build them. In relation to kind of this particular location, like you mentioned, it could be used for some other, maybe more pedestrian-friendly or other use, but you've got two vacant restaurant buildings in the area, like you mentioned, this Spoons Place and, and the vacant Wendy's. This is a site that doesn't offer viability from Canton Road or most of the others. It's not a site that would be highly desirable to most of these other types of uses. It's got the Meyer loading dock right there to the east. There's no accessibility to the. This is a site that doesn't offer viability from Canton Road or most of the others. It's not a site that would be highly desirable to most of these other types of uses. It's got the Meyer loading dock right there to the east. There's no accessibility to the south or really visibility anywhere but the north. The car wash is one of the more design-oriented best fits for a lot like this when you exclude the requirement for the, you know, mixed-use design. What were some of the other concerns you had mentioned if I hadn't addressed?
I think that was, I mean, I think we covered it, right? Okay. Well, thank you.
Okay, thanks very much.
Yeah. Anybody want to make a motion or...
Madam Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion. I move to postpone action on planning application number 058-SOU-8668 for proposed car wash special land use on parcel 058-99-0003-723 at 45001 Ford Road, based on the special land use application materials, not providing sufficient information to demonstrate compliance with the standard Section 27.03(c) of the zoning ordinance and the applicable development standards of the zoning ordinance, as noted by planning division staff, and pending receipt of revised application materials from the applicant that demonstrates compliance with the standards of the zoning ordinance.
Support.
Great. We have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Foster to table the discussion. Any further discussion? All right. Commissioner Lee, could you call the vote, please?
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee, yes. Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Chairperson Zubor.
Yes. All right, motion carries. We will hopefully see you again.
So, Patrick, when they come back with their new information, we won't, we won't have to have another public hearing, correct?
That's correct. We've already had the required public hearing, so that part of the process has concluded.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda does not have a public hearing, and it is Canton Township Fire Station Number Four, where we are considering site plan modification for parcel number 138-99-0009-702 at 42539 Michigan Ave. The property is located at the southwest corner of Michigan Ave. and South Lily Road. The proposed site modification, we're talking about proposed site modifications for a new fire station. Patrick, tell us all about it, please.
Sure, thank you. In, at the May 6, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of Fire Station Number Four to be located at the southwest corner of Michigan Ave. and Lily Road. And since that time, there's been some site investigations and wetland surveying in more detail, and it's indicated that around the area where the fire station was previously proposed, around the southwest corner of Michigan Ave. and Lily Road, there were wetland areas there that were prohibitive to the development. Just the amount of the wetland impact and both process and cost of mitigation would make the project much more difficult, if not impossible. So, with staff and consultants, we reviewed alternatives, and Canton Township owns two parcels. So, there's, there's an east parcel and a west parcel, and previously, the fire station was proposed on the east parcel. Well, there's also township-owned available land on the west parcel, and there's a way to construct the proposed fire station in a way that would still have some wetland impacts, but would minimize those wetland impacts. So, minimizes wetland impacts, better for the overall development environment of the area, less costly in terms of the mitigation. So, basically, putting, moving the building westward. Some of the significant changes have been removing the drive that previously came from Lily Road, so now the proposed fire station would have the access exclusively from Michigan Ave. That shouldn't make a major difference, since most of the, most of the trips will be through Michigan Ave. The exposure from the road will be about the same in terms of the building's proximity. There'll be a sign located there, and with Michigan Ave. being separated, there's also turnarounds there. So, in this area here, as we see on the plan, there's a turnaround area right in front of the fire station. So, if there's westbound traffic, they want to go into the fire station, they can turn around here, travel eastbound, and then enter through the drive there. This would be subject to MDOT review of the curb cuts. Overall, much of the development is relatively the same. There's some differences in terms of the layout, and as a result, lighting, landscaping, parking, things of that nature, but the overall development concept is the same. The building elevation changes, or there are no building elevation changes. The same elevation plans that were in the plans at the May 2024 Planning Commission meeting are in the packet this evening. But nevertheless, because of the significant number of changes, this returns to the Planning Commission for re-review and recommendation. So, staff's recommendation is approval of the site plan for Fire Station Number Four, the two subject tax parcels, subject to state, county, and township requirements, including compliance with landscaping and signage requirements of the zoning ordinance, except those modifications recommended pursuant to Section 2.16(b) of the zoning ordinance for the land use and the wetland setbacks, and the modifications approved pursuant to Section 5.07 of the zoning ordinance for the required foundation landscape depth on the south side of the building and the required frontage berm. Our staff report summarizes some modifications from the landscape requirements, some of which are pretty consistent with the previous modifications on the previous versions of the plans. So, that concludes our staff report, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you, Patrick. And the project sponsor is here. You want to come up to the mic and tell us more?
Evening. Mike Malone with Partners in Architecture, and Nate Ringholtz as well with Partners. And we have our landscape architect here. Talk trees if you want. So, I'll let you talk, Nate, since you've done all this effort.
Right. So, as Patrick's, this is Nate from Partners in Architecture. As Patrick Sloan mentioned, we've had to redevelop the fire station site plan because we discovered wetlands on the site while we were doing our environmental reviews. This particular location is the only location on the site, and this site plan configuration is the only configuration that we were able to find that actually reduced the wetland impact under an acre. There were multiple benefits to that, but mainly, the state of Michigan views wetland disturbances under an acre to be less of an issue to the overall environment, and they're far, it's far easier to get approved if you're under an acre. In comparison, our original site plan was far more spread out. We weren't concerned about trying to concede anything because there's nothing built here. We had as much space as we wanted, and we were almost three acres of site disturbance. The average cost of a wetland credit is $180,000, and we would have to purchase two of those for every acre of disturbance. So, in our original site plan, we were looking at almost $1 million of wetland credits, which would almost certainly not have been approved at the state. So, this, we anticipate approval on. There's a number of questions that have been addressed in the planning services. We're prepared to address those if any of the planning commissioners have specific concerns or questions. We've had a chance to look at them.
Good. Thank you. I'm going to go to Commissioner Watkins.
No questions, ma'am chair.
All right, Commissioner Lee?
No.
All right, Commissioner Weber?
No questions.
Commissioner Foster?
No questions.
Mr. Cruz?
These damn wetlands. It's always an issue. So, how did, did you discover more wetlands than what was regulated?
Well, what happened was, it's what's called forested wetland. So, the average layperson looks at this site, sees a forest, doesn't think it's wetland. Well...
Let me chime in, too.
That's also surprising.
One other requirement that the township had to go through, they're getting a federal grant for part of this funding, and the federal grant required kind of a, I guess, an environmental review, so... Yep, the township hired an environmental consultant. They came out, and most of the site is forested wetlands. We had no idea, you know, we had it surveyed previously, it was never identified, so we were as shocked as everybody else.
That's the first step that everyone should consider is, let's make sure the wetlands aren't an issue. Chick-fil-A has the issue, Top Golf has the issue, but I'm glad you're able to work it out. That's it.
Okay. Commissioner Janowski?
Nice-looking facility. Real nice. Good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. I have no problem with this, so, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to recommend approval of the site plan for Fire Station Number Four and tax parcels 139, excuse me, 138-99-0009-701 and -702, subject to all state, county, and township requirements, including compliance with the landscaping and signage requirements of the zoning ordinance, except those modifications recommended pursuant to Section 2.16(b) of the zoning ordinance for land use and wetland setbacks, and modifications approved pursuant to Section 5.07 of the zoning ordinance for the required foundation landscape depth on the south side of the building and the required frontage berm height.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Lee. Any further discussion? Commissioner Lee, could you please call the vote?
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee, yes. Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Chairperson Zubor.
Yes, motion carries. All right.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. All right. Final item on our agenda this evening is the MECA project. It's item number 031-SPX-8758, Muslim Educational Community Center of America, also known as MECA. We're considering the site plan for parcel number 031-99-0007-000 at 6200 North Ridge Road. This property is located on the east side of North Ridge Road between Ford Road and Hanford Road, and the proposed new, it's proposed new construction for a religious institution and community center. Patrick, please tell us more.
Sure, thank you. The applicant, MECA, proposes to, it should say, construct a 48,409-square-foot mosque and 660-square-foot accessory storage building on the parcel at 6200 North Ridge Road, located on the east side of North Ridge between Ford Road and Hanford Road. The site is owned R1 single-family residential, and religious institutions are special land uses in the R1 zoning district. The subject parcel is just under 11 and 1/2 acres, and it includes a single-family residence on its west side. The residence will be demolished as part of the project. The east side of the site includes Fellows Creek and densely wooded areas. Fellows Creek in this area runs west to east, the parcels to the north, and then turns southward through the middle of this parcel. Additionally, a tributary to the south branch of Fellows Creek runs from the northeastern corner westward to converge with Fellows Creek on the parcel. At its meeting on June 24th of this year, the Canton Township Board of Trustees approved a special land use application for a religious institution on the subject site. Prior to the Township Board's approval of the special land use, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the special land use application at its meeting on June 2nd of 2025. At that meeting, we had gone through pretty extensively with our staff report in terms of the site development. So, even though we have an eight-page report here, I'll just kind of summarize some of the highlights here, since I think we've all heard a lot of the previous discussion on this. The first thing I'll mention is regarding any kind of site changes that have taken place since the special land use. One has been the addition of a 660-square-foot accessory storage building in the southeast corner of the development, still far away from any adjacent residences or neighborhoods. And the purpose of this building is to have a storage garage, and also with any maintenance on the grounds, there would be a building to have that. There are some religious institutions in the community that have accessory storage buildings, so this would be about the size of a garage to do that. It would be, proposed to be constructed with the same materials as the principal building, which is brick and block. Next, for the building height, the top of the higher dome crescent on the building is 65 feet, which is 10 feet higher than permitted by the zoning ordinance. This was an item that we also discussed during special land use, but at the time of special land use, that's not really when decisions are made on structures and buildings. The applicant may lower that dome by 10 feet to comply with the zoning ordinance, or apply for a variance to the zoning board of appeals for additional height proposed. Although we recommend that the applicant consider lowering the height of the dome to 55 feet, the applicant has indicated interest in applying for a variance, so the applicant may apply for a variance. And if the applicant does apply for a variance, we recommend that the ZBA acts on the variance application prior to Township Board review of the site plan. So, staff has a recommendation on the building height, but ultimately, that would be a decision of the zoning board of appeals. For the access management and the traffic impact, we had gone through before the traffic impacts of the site and the traffic impact study, and our consultants' review of the study. One of the notable changes since the special land use was approved is that instead of having a bypass lane going southbound and bypassing traffic, the southern, the southbound center-left turn lane is proposed. So, what that shows is, and I can zoom in here on the plan, rather than having a, rather than having, previously, there was a bypass lane here on the far west side where traffic would have to go around to pass. Now, what's proposed is that rather than have a bypass lane, this lane on the far west is the regular travel lane, and the lane in the middle will be the center-left turn lane. So, if vehicles are turning left, going southbound, and they start to stack up, they can stack up in the center-left turn lane, and then vehicles that are traveling don't need to get over into the right lane, they just stay in the regular travel lane. So, that was a discussion that we had at the Planning Commission level, and since then, we've met with the applicant in Wayne County, and we've, we've agreed on changing the bypass lane to a center-left turn lane. So, what's proposed on the plan is subject to Wayne County approval, but it's something that we've agreed on with the applicant. Next, with the number of parking spaces, the applicant is asking for a modification in the number of parking spaces. The applicant proposes 354 parking spaces, which is more than what the zoning ordinance permits, but the ordinance allows the Planning Commission to grant modifications to the parking requirements if there's a parking study that justifies an increase. Based on the trip generation analysis that's in the traffic study, we recommend approval of a modification to allow for up to 358 parking spaces. The traffic impact study accounts for the trips that would go with those parking spaces, and if there's a peak time, like peak prayer time on Friday, or there's a large event there, we'll want to make sure there's enough parking on the site to accommodate the use. So, we recommend approval of that modification. With the architecture of the building, the plans include elevation pages with material and color specifications. The zoning ordinance requires 50% brick and masonry. Based on the calculations of the plans, it looks like the percentage of brick is 49.94% with the other materials being 20.82% limestone and metal, just under 15% burnished block, and just over 14% of windows. Section 26.06 footnote H of the zoning ordinance allows the Planning Commission to grant a modification from the 50% brick requirement. Sometimes other materials have been applied in terms of masonry, so sometimes stone has been applied. I'm not sure if we've used limestone as a material, but I know limestone has been used as a high-quality material. In this case, if it were, if it was brick and limestone, it, it would far exceed the 50%. The burnished block is also just under 15%. So, there's a lot of natural material and masonry that's being proposed on the building. So, if the standard of Section 26.06 is taken just at 50% being brick and no other material... So if the standard of section 26.06 is taken just at 50% being brick and no other material, we would recommend a modification from the literal standard of that, just because it's .06% less than 50%, and with the limestone and the burnished block, and just how the materials complement each other, we would recommend that modification based on those Also, the materials of the accessory building, again, they match the materials of the proposed mosque building. The last item that we want to discuss is the landscaping and screening. Article 5 of the zoning ordinance includes standards for landscaping for road frontage, general site screening, parking lot landscaping, buffer landscaping, and section 5.07 of the ordinance allows the Planning Commission to approve certain modifications. And we have in here on page five a bullet point list of those things that can be modified and the reasons why. We recommend some landscape modifications from some of the buffer areas, and on page six of our review letter, we outline what's proposed on the plans and the reasons why modifications are proposed. Last month, I had took a site visit and met with the applicant's landscape architect on the site to walk the site, to look at the existing vegetation that's being proposed to be preserved, looking at the topography, looking at the surrounding areas, and looking at those areas where there's going to be planting and trying to get some assurances that what'll be planted there will work. And in some of the cases, especially along the north side buffer, the applicant is proposing to have 27 Green Giant Arborvida that we understand is a deer-resistant variety of Arborvida. In the zoning ordinance, junipers and Arborvida are not considered as evergreen trees, although I think Arborvida might be regulated under our tree ordinance. So under the letter of the ordinance, when junipers or Arborvida are planted, they don't count as evergreen trees. But in this case, we recommend approval of the modification to allow for the Arborvida that are proposed to count towards the planting requirements of that north side buffer area because the area in which it's proposed to be planted, and looking at the site and discussing this with the applicant's landscape architect, we're not sure a spruce or pine would thrive in those areas where it looks like there could be a considerable, a considerable amount of shade based on the existing trees that are going to be remaining on that site. And specifically, when we're looking on the north side of the site, there's a lot of vegetation there on that north side, and the creek is farther north of the property line. So the applicant is striving to preserve as many trees and vegetation as possible along the north side of the site, including having a retaining wall just north of the parking lot. So in doing so, we don't necessarily want to see healthy trees removed just to meet the buffering requirement, to plant new trees that might not do as well there. We want to take advantage of keeping the viable, protected, healthy trees there, and trying to supplement that as best we can with additional landscaping to still meet the intent of the screening requirement. So in doing so, there's an area on the north side that shows 27 Green Giant Arborvida, which could have a better long-term screening effect than a spruce or pine could in that area. Therefore, we recommend approval of the single and double row of evergreens as designed without a berm on the north side of the site as proposed on sheet L1, including the 27 Green Giant Arborvida unless Canton Township's landscape architect consultant determines that sufficient areas exist along the north side of the site to include additional evergreens pursuant to section 5.03D1. The reason being is that when sites are constructed, we have a landscape architect consultant that does the landscape inspections, and sometimes we can look at a site beforehand, a site can be designed, but until something's actually constructed and the site work is done and we go out in the field during the post-construction landscape inspection, a lot of times we learn things about how landscaping could be improved, or things could be further modified. So we do recommend the proposal of the plan to landscape the area on the north side of the site as proposed, but we want to allow our landscape architect flexibility if there's something in the field that could be added during the post-construction inspection to improve that and bring it more into compliance with the letter of the ordinance. Along the, and also on the north side, we don't recommend the berm. The ordinance requires a four-foot berm on the northeast and south sides, but because of the existing trees and topography on the north side, we don't recommend grading for a berm there. We just recommend the planting according to the plans. For the east side buffer, we recommend approval of the single and the double row of evergreens without a berm on that side because there's a very far distance on the east side between the development and the residential neighborhood to the east. So there's a creek that runs from north to south, and there's a heavily vegetated woodland there, so it's unlikely anything would be visible, but there is considerable planting with the area that is available. And again, the applicant wants to preserve as many healthy trees as possible, so we don't want to see any more healthy trees removed than necessary, and we wouldn't want to see healthy, protected trees removed just to plant a berm of much smaller trees that could take many, many years to grow, to have that screening effect that may already be there. So again, we recommend approval of the single and double row of evergreens without a berm on the east side, subject to the condition that the landscape architect consultant for the township can determine additional planting at the time of site inspection. And finally, for the south side buffer, we recommend approval of a three-foot-high berm instead of a four-foot-high berm based on the available area in which to do a berm. The berms have to be no steeper than a one-on-three slope, so to do that, you would need more than the 25-foot width that's required in a side yard setback. So a four-foot berm would not be feasible without increasing the slope, which could be detrimental to the berm itself. So we recommend a three-foot-high berm on the south side with fewer deciduous trees and ornamental trees on the south side of the site as proposed on sheet L1, unless the landscape architect consultant requires more during the site inspection. And there are considerable evergreens also on the south side of the site as well, but in looking at the distance of the planting on the south side of the site, the area from about the front lot line on the west side, along the, if we go on the south side of the site and we're in the southwest corner, throughout that entire southern lot line, there's a considerable amount of evergreens and double rows of evergreens. And then when it gets to about, even with the southeast part of the building, that's the area where the required deciduous trees and ornamental trees are planted. So rather than having deciduous trees and ornamental trees spread out along the southern berm, what the applicant wants to do is consolidate as many evergreen trees as possible along that south side between the east side of the building and the western property line to maximize the amount of screening that's there, and in some cases exceed the standards by not spreading out the evergreen screening as much as is sometimes seen on these types of berms. So we recommend approval of the south side buffer landscaping as proposed on sheet L1, subject to the condition with the township's landscape architect consultant. So with that, our recommendation is approval of the site plan for a religious institution at 6,200 North Ridge Road on the subject parcel, as illustrated on the site plan, subject to state, county, and township requirements, and subject to the following three modifications. First, pursuant to section 4.01C6 of the zoning ordinance, 354 parking spaces are approved based on the applicant's materials and staff analysis. Second, pursuant to section 26.06 footnote H of the zoning ordinance, the facade material allocations proposed on the A sheets of the plans are approved, including less than 50% brick based on the additional proposed limestone areas and complementary materials. And third, pursuant to section 5.07 of the zoning ordinance, modifications to the buffer landscape requirements of section 5.03D1 are approved based on staff's analysis and recommendations unless Canton Township's landscape architect consultant determines that sufficient areas exist where greater compliance with this subsection of the ordinance can be achieved. So that concludes our staff analysis, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Project sponsor? Come to the podium, please. Give us your name and the address for the record.
Thank you. Hassan Beidun, 899 Burlington. I'm here on behalf of Mecca. We have Hassan from Gavin of Associates, he's our architect, and Jesse from the Almer Group, he's our engineering group.
Awesome. All right. Do you have anything to add to what Patrick already told us?
I just want to say, thank you for having us here tonight, and thank you for the process we've been going through. We're trying to meet all the requirements and make everybody happy in the process, and I think Patrick did a great job, and even you guys. We met you so many times, and we went through the process to make sure that we meet especially the traffic study and the changes that you requested. And we're trying to come up with a nice building that make everybody happy and make Canton Township proud of it. And I will answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Anybody, you want to start down there? Commissioner Janowski? Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Just the one comment I have, you know, I've repeated this many times, you're dead-ending the walk, and this is how gaps get created. And I know there's challenges at the, at that north end and crossing a drain, but it is possible to cross a drain. We do it all the time. So, you know, I don't like the principle of, oh yeah, let's, let's not make them do it just because it's difficult to get permitted. That's not a good enough reason. I, I'd like to see walks extended to the property line or past the property line, past the drain, not just this project, on all projects, unless there's a, a very, very good reason why you can't do it, you know, not just it's difficult to permit and it costs a little more money.
Yeah, we've discussed, Jesse with the Almer Group, we discussed this with the owner, and I, and I agree, it's common, common that we, that we make every effort to do those kinds of things. Not to divert the conversation, but the owners, Mecca has gone through a long process here, and, and we feel that they've, they've, you know, given every effort towards accommodating all the, all the comments from the township and county, and, and there's going to be a big expense to, to a lot of these things that, that maybe were unforeseen, and this is just another, another item that, that came up, and, you know, it's, it's like, you know, how, how much do you ask for and how much do you give? And, and this is kind of one of those things that we, we'd prefer to, to, I mean, there's 20 feet of drop between the end of the walk and the ditch, and there's flood plain and wetlands, and, and you're right, there is, there is that, but we've, we've waited a year and a half to get this project moving. We know how long that could take at the, at the Eagle and at the, at the state level to get those types of things approved in addition to that cost, so comments heard.
Anything else? Okay. Commissioner Foster?
Um, no questions.
Commissioner Weber?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Lee?
Just one quick question. Arborvides, you got to explain that to me. Why isn't that an evergreen? It's green all the time, right, Patrick?
Why are Arborvida not, not evergreen?
Yeah. I'm planting some, that's why I want to know.
All right. Well-
The-
I'm sorry. It just threw me off.
Yeah, the, the zoning ordinance would classify it as an evergreen shrub and not an evergreen tree.
Oh, thank you. That's all I wanted.
Although-
Thank you.
The, you know, there's smaller types of Arborvida that you might put in your shrub bed, but if you're doing like screening, it, it'll look like an evergreen tree, like Green Giant Arborvida, just because of how high it gets.
That's what we're planting, that's why I asked.
Yeah. Some ordinances allow Arborvida to be counted as trees. Ours is just one of those ordinances that doesn't, and not saying that it, it should or shouldn't, but, you know, the Planning Commission's got that discretion in that part of the ordinance for reasons like that.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we answered your landscaping question? Awesome. All right. Commissioner Watkins?
Sure. Real quick, two things. So I will say that you had me at the beginning when you said, Patrick, we talked with Wayne County at the very beginning of this, and I could have jumped up and ran around this room, and I'll tell you why, and that is, not only for this project, but that should be happening all the time. Every time someone comes to this table, you need to go and you need to talk to the authorities that are going to have jurisdiction over the roadway, because what you brought before, I would have, it would have been a clear no. The previous design for the traffic was a no, but now you've gone, you've talked with Wayne County, you're going to have a turn lane. It's going to eliminate so many problems that would happen at that intersection, not to mention that it's already a crowded intersection, it's not really, it's poorly timed already. It's not really good. To add to it in its current configuration, what you brought to us before would have been poor, and I was told you'd go back again, but you've done it this time. I will say this, not only does that area need to be drivable, but it does need to be walkable, and I'm a big proponent of what Commissioner Cruz says, is that we have to be able to connect these developments in the best way possible. And saying that permitting is too tough or too difficult is not a good excuse to not extend the sidewalk. It is not, for us to say that something is hard to do does not mean it's impossible to do. So I would suggest to you that you think about what it would take to be able to do that before you start this project. And again, it's just to think about what it would take to be able to get it done. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right. I have no questions, so. You want to make a motion?
Sure. I move to recommend approval of the site plan for a religious institution at 6,200 North Ridge Road on parcel number 031-99-0007-000, as illustrated on the site plan, subject to all state, county, and township requirements, and approval of the following modifications. One, pursuant to section 4.01C6 of the zoning ordinance, 354 parking spaces are approved based on the applicant's materials and staff's analysis. Two, pursuant to section 26.06 footnote H of the zoning ordinance, the facade material allocations proposed on sheets A.201 and A.203 of the plans is approved, including a less than 50% brick based on the additional proposed limestone areas and complementary materials. Three, pursuant to section 5.07 of the zoning ordinance, modifications to the buffer landscape requirements of section 5.03D1 are approved based on staff's analysis and recommendations unless Canton Township's landscape architect consultant determines that sufficient areas exist where greater compliance with section 5.03D1 can be achieved.
Support.
Great. We have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Lee. Any further discussion? Commissioner Lee, would you call the vote, please?
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee, yes. Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Chairperson Zubor?
Yes. Motion carries. We wish you the best.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Patrick, we have a miscellaneous item on our agenda. Do you have any miscellaneous for us?
I do have one, just one miscellaneous item. I know the agenda says none, but there is one item-
Patrick, I'm sorry. Could you please exit the room before you start your conversations, if you don't mind? We're still meeting. Thank you.
There's just one item I wanted to follow up on, and it pertained to the public comment earlier in the agenda and what the comment may have been referring to, so I'm not sure what exactly it was, but looking at the, both Michigan Zoning Enabling Act and Michigan Planning Enabling Act, I just wanted to read some of the items directly from that regarding membership of certain bodies. And in the Zoning Enabling Act, there's a subsection that regulates members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and the text there states, quote, "An employee or contractor of the legislative body may not serve as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals." So, but the Zoning Board of Appeals' membership in the Zoning Enabling Act, it does allow for one member of the elected body if they choose. So they could technically be an employee of the community as being a member of the elected Board of Trustees, but that's optional. In Canton, we don't have an elected member of the Board of Trustees on the ZBA, but in some communities, they can. That's about as close to an employee as you can get. But obviously, our, our Zoning Board of Appeals is not allowed to have employees, and then it has the prohibition language for not having contractors on a Zoning Board of Appeals. So that's in the Zoning Enabling Act. The Planning Commission is created by the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. It's a, it's a different law, and in the membership of the Planning Enabling Act, it states, "Except as provided in the subsection I'm reading from." An elected officer or employee of the local unit of government is not eligible to be a member of the Planning Commission. Now, in the Planning Enabling Act, it allows for a member of the legislative body, so trustee Foster is the ex officio member from the board who's on the Planning Commission. Most communities in Michigan, they have a member of their elected body on their Planning Commission.
Commission, so except as provided in the act, there's no other elected officer. And then there's the prohibition of an employee of the local unit of government. So the zoning enabling act, it has a prohibition for a contractor on the ZBA, but the name contractor is not specifically mentioned here in the planning act. Employee is mentioned, same as the zoning act, but not in the planning act. So I'm not a lawyer, and I'll ask our chief counsel this question, but a contractor is not explicitly in the act here prohibited from being a member of the Planning Commission. As I previously stated, with certain disclosures and, and things of that nature, there's things that we can do within our bylaws and within our ethics or ordinance to make sure that we're proceeding appropriately. So again, I wanted to read those two sections of those two different state acts. One regulates the ZBA, one regulates the Planning Commission, and I'll refer that question to our chief counsel just to get any kind of clarification we may need, and I'll report back to the Planning Commission on what we find.
She's not on Zoom. She's not on Zoom, is she?
She is. I'm not sure if she's prepared to-
Oh, she's not ready. Okay, I got it.
Our, our chief counsel is our deputy supervisor.
Okay. Got it. I thought he was referring to those little stipends we get where employees. I really did. I didn't know what he was talking about.
I think, I think he's probably, he probably, unless you know.
I have no idea.
I, I have a feeling there's, he's got a axe to grind with somebody, or, I don't know, maybe he's referring to me. I don't know.
Well-
I don't know. I could go home.
I can sleep.
I could sleep.
I could better sleep.
Yeah. Mackenzie, I can hear you. Our, our legal consultant is, yeah, I can hear you.
I was just going to say, I'm glad our public comments specifically, Joel, who addressed this, we can take a more in-depth look and get a memo to provide to the Planning Commission,
Can you summarize that, because we heard some of it. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Mackenzie.
I'm guessing you probably, you or the administration needs to see exactly what he gave, he says he gave to the police department, so.
Feds, he said.
In the feds. Both, yeah.
Yeah, whatever we have available publicly, we'll, we'll find out. And then Mackenzie had noted that Foster Swift can prepare a letter and analysis of that. So, so that, that's, that's great. We'll, we'll talk to our chief counsel and perhaps with Foster Swift, and if there's some kind of letter that needs to be issued to that effect, we'll keep the Planning Commission informed and the zoning board of appeals informed.
Kate, you missed all the fun. So anything else we need to discuss?
That's it.
Okay.
So move to adjourn, I'm sure.
All right. We have a motion to adjourn, and a second, we have a motion by Commissioner Lee and support by Commissioner Janowski. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. I did that just for the, the TV crew there.
Oh, that's right.